The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and Star-Ledger on Wednesday, January 9, 2019, as well as posting on the bulletin board from the city clerk's office. Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers of the body.
Good morning.
Councilman Davis.
Present.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman McRae.
Present.
Councilman Storch.
Here.
Vice President Hocke.
Here.
And Council President, who's here?
Present.
Madam President, we have all members of the president.
Mr. Clerk, are there any communications from the mayor?
Yes, we have correspondence dated February 27, 2019, from his honor the mayor, here on the map, addressed to members of the government body, requesting advice and consent. Georgina Solis, the servant member of 23rd year of recess commission.
Okay, other communications and petitions?
I have no reports, I'm not going to.
The bills, list, and other financial documents have been sent to the council via email. Okay. We're leaving now again? Okay, we're on discussion items, and we're not going to take a lot of time with this, but in order not to be annihilation of the public meetings act, if you have your feedback, I ask that we put on discussion items. So, the first item is coffee with the council initiative. I understand that initiative was placed on our plate previously, but nothing was done, so I'd like to get feedback, starting left to right, to see if you want to do it. And if you do, we're probably going to put a subcommittee in.
Um, I think it's a great idea. My only question is, would we all be able to be there at the same time? Does that somehow violate the sunshine law? And how will we decide who could be there? And we have staggered time, so we can all try to fit into our schedules.
Okay, Councilor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank Councilwoman. Anytime there would be a quorum of council that would require to be noticed as a public meeting, if less than a quorum is called, then we do not require such a notice. So, if there's an intention of having the whole body at one time, then that would be required to be noticed by the body. But if we're going to do three or less, let's do not require such a notice.
Okay, so then, I mean, the question could be, should the public meeting essentially be coffee with council?
Absolutely.
Certainly.
You can call it, you can notice that as a meeting. Only thing you would be required to do is have some form of public comment in that meeting. And obviously, the clerk can see if that goes.
Correct.
I'm fine.
I'm just going down the line to see what your feeling is about it. Vice President Hocke.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and be a good way to meet with some of our constituents if we're upset, I'd be supportive of giving it.
Councilman Good.
Mr. Governor, will you just stick that last bit in the back of the plate?
Oh, absolutely. If you're willing to call it, if the meeting is calling all council members that involves any city business, it just requires that the clerk provide notice at the meeting. As soon as it's called, it's a special meeting.
It's not a special meeting, but it's, would you say, beyond that, it's just proactive? And just in case it is more, more difficult?
Exactly. If it's open to more than three members, then I would recommend that the clerk call it as a meeting.
Okay.
You don't have to conduct, you know, if it's merely just a meeting to hear from constituents, that's fine.
Right.
You don't need an agenda, other than that. The clerk would obviously put some, several of the agenda together, but you're not required to make action, but if it's purposes of city business or interaction with the public, then I recommend that it be called, that's it.
Right.
That being said, Councilman Good, I have no idea how you feel.
Oh, yes, I'm all for it. I'm just saying, being proactive, we should just go ahead and do it that way. Because we don't know how many are going to be there, but just in case, it would be an essential factor.
Yes, I agree.
So, I support it.
Councilman Aron.
Yeah, so originally, when I came on to the council, this is one of my initiatives, so I'd like to see that we're on the agenda, and I am a favorite.
Councilman Storch.
Yes.
Now, finally get a few volunteers at the council, three or less, that would like to work on the logistics, logistics name, place, time, format.
I'd be interested.
Interested? Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay. Are you taking your house sign up yet?
Um, okay. It's a twitch, but I'll see you.
Three and three. District lawyer, District Attorney, District Attorney, three. Councilman Aron, Councilwoman Davis, and Councilman Storch. Thank you. Uh, the second, I don't want to committee a layson report, so this is simply to deal with whether the council members have met with their, that are at the committee, if they want to share something about the meeting a little bit, then they can, or if they dealt with any of the boards or commissions that they service laysons with. So, Mr. Storch, then come back this way. Councilman Storch.
You're asking for reports.
It's not really a form quite heavy, you met with your committee yet, then?
I was going to have that meeting this morning, but rather gotten away.
Okay, you can let the one you have.
Health and, um, Health and Human Services.
Okay. No, I have.
Yeah, so the recreation committee has met with the director, and we were talking about events that lined up for the spring, also coincided with the 150th anniversary. So, once we have, I guess, more concrete agenda, we will put that forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Good.
Yes, as Councilman Aron said, the recreation department has, the committee has met with the recreation department, Social Services.
Oh, you only have to do yours, the ones you're chair. Okay.
Finance Committee meeting tomorrow with Mr. West at 5:30.
Okay.
And it is our first official meeting.
And we see that you have received members on the agenda tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. I've met with Andy, with the director, with my subcommittee, one of my subcommittee members, that's the part of the department committee, and we're just so far talking about the goals of the committee. I also service layson for the Board of Education, so I've been to, it's work and study also the regular meeting. And if you're planning to go tomorrow night, I got the message that tomorrow night is being canceled. I guess they're waiting on the budget to come from the governor before they have the work and study. And I've been to the same citizens' building, which I service layson, to introduce myself, hand out cards and pens and buttons. Councilman Hocke. Uh, Councilman Hocke.
Yes, I am chair of the, uh, of the IT committee, which we had met. We will be meeting on the third Thursday of every month at noon. So, we are off to a start. You know, the first business of the, of the committee is somewhat of a self-annihilation, to figure out exactly where we are, so we can determine where we're going. But I'm very confident that we'll make some progress this year. Also, the city lays on to the Plainfield Housing Authority, which did attend the meeting last, or a couple weeks ago this month, at Richmond Towers. There just has been an appointment of the new Housing Authority Commissioner. And I'll be attending those meetings regularly.
Councilman McRae.
I'm chair of the Economic Development Committee, as well as I'm the liaison to the Planning Board. On the Economic Development Committee, we've met twice and had very good meetings. There are a lot of exciting things that are happening here in Plainfield, especially in the TOD North, and TOD, which is Transcorp Development Village South, and there are more things to come. Planning Department is moving ahead with quite a few projects, and we meet every second and fourth Thursday for the Planning Department, and every third, on Thursday, with the Economic Development Department.
Councilman Davis.
I am the chair of the Police Committee, and for obvious reasons, we have not had a chance to be with the director. However, he did for a report to me, which I look forward to, that was at the council after the meeting. And basically, the police has responded to 11,054 various calls for service, as opposed to 9,861 in comparison to this time last year. In response to complaints by residents and to aid overall traffic safety, the officers continue to aggressively enforce traffic violations. From January 1st to March 1st, the police has issued 3,226 movement violations, and this is a 24% increase in the enforcement of movement violations compared to the same time last year. They continue to analyze crime data in conjunction with directed patrols, investigate intelligence activities, and use of advanced technology, and community supports combat crime. And they've had five audits to engage the youth in the community since the beginning of the year. I am, so we're working to meet in March. I'm also the liaison to the Pemblue. I've met with the executive director, as well as attended one Pemblue meeting, and they are working to implement their dual-stream recycling. And at the last meeting, they said that their response, their complaint calls have gone down, and they're actively working to streamline that service and to make it as much of a convenience to residents, as well as following the regulations that they have to follow. And I'm the alternate liaison to the Greenbrook Flood Commission, and I've attended one of those meetings thus far, and they don't really have too much information to report on people just yet.
Thank you so much. Thank all of you. And I deliberately didn't deal with the last committee that I liaise on to, and that's the Plainfield Central Business District. And I left that last because it's a good segue into introducing our director of Economic Development, who will take the third part of the discussion list.
Good evening, council, and residents, and employees. I'm proud to say that we kicked off the Plainfield Central Business District Management Corporation of July of last year. There's been a lot of great work. The president of the District Management Corporation is Jeff Spellman, and Jeff will introduce Antoinette Revard, our new executive director. Jeff?
Good evening to the council members, to the mayor, the administration, members of the public, and members of the, of the city and employees. Gives me great pleasure to introduce this evening Antoinette Revard, who is our new executive director of the Central Business District. It was quite a competitive search. We had a search committee, we had over 100 people applied for the position, we did face-to-face interviews of a dozen people, we brought the two finalists to the, to the full board, and we had obstacle courses, and presentations, and references, and we're so delighted to bring Antoinette here today. She is a resident of Patterson and very passionate there. She's a community organizer, she's been executive director of nonprofit organization there. She has a lot of expertise in things like the Main Street methodologies, methodology. She's got a very, very good network of contacts throughout the state of people related to business districts, and she has a master's in public, public policy. And I can let her give her bio a little bit, but she's going to be working with us. She's, in the first day, she's, she's already camping out in City Hall to meet different, different groups of the administration. She's going to be hitting the streets to meet the business owners and property owners. And one of the first major things, it will be cooperating with the 150th celebration, is planning a Plainfield Restaurant Week and Taste of Plainfield. So, with that, I'll give the microphone to Antoinette to introduce herself.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am so excited to be here with you all. I am hoping that I am the person that's going to take you to the places that you want to go with your business district. I have discovered a lot about Plainfield in my quest to get the job, because I can't, I didn't know much about the city, and the people who I know live here, they were like, "Well, it's Plainfield." What does that mean exactly? Well, I came here, I think the great thing you have going for you are the residents, and the hope, and the working together, the collaborations with the city, the community, and myself, the business district, that I think we're going to do great things here.
Thank you, Antoinette. And again, she will be going around meeting the various departments, as well as she'll be joined with Jeanette Aparicio to meet the business community and to partner and leverage our resources. So, thank you.
Thank you. The, oh, you mean, okay. The council is now going to move to the audience. Unfinished business, director Clayton Hott, director of Communications and Technology will have a brief demonstration of the proposed Plainfield marketing strategies. So, Council?
There's more to Plainfield.
That you can really change your teeth into.
Plainfield is home.
Home to over 125 ethnic restaurants.
By far the most delicious city in Union County.
Riddance, that's American, Italian.
Explore all the quaint eateries.
Peruvian, stone food.
The cultural diversity of our city is reflected in our foods.
And good old Americans, too.
Enjoy the flavors of the world in one amazing city.
Thank you.
You don't have to go any farther than Plainfield, New Jersey.
Favorite foods from around the world. Taste the meridional, that is Plainfield, New Jersey. There's more to cities' business.
More to us.
The businesses of Plainfield, New Jersey. Our diverse businesses.
Are just as diverse as our community.
Unique businesses, including.
Great opportunities for businesses.
And half of the New Jersey sales types.
The city believes in me.
And my business. Almost half a billion in investment dollars.
Plainfield is a city with a pulse underground.
There's more to my business.
More to us.
We are Plainfield, New Jersey. Discover what we're all about for yourself. There's more to our city.
More to a community.
More to us. More to what you know.
About Plainfield, New Jersey, the gem of Union County. Plainfield is an architectural masterpiece.
Brand-taking sites.
And captivating notes.
Plainfield has 10 historic districts.
With their roots.
A community of diversity.
And perhaps two amazing, I don't need to mention.
All a short trip away from New York City.
There's more to my city.
My community. More to us.
Explore Plainfield's historic facts, and together, let's map out our future. During Baptist three months, we celebrate those influential African-Americans that hail from Plainfield, New Jersey. Here are a couple examples. In 1965, Charles and Hannah Booker won a landmark case against the Plainfield Board of Education, ending segregation in the city's public schools. And in 1969, Marion Johnson, Plainfield's very own Vin Sicker, helped put a man on the moon as a brilliant engineer. Please join me in saluting this remarkable group of Plainfielders.
Excellent. I just want to point out that that is not the full extent of all the promotions that we've done, that's just to give you a taste of some of the things that we did in 2018. And we look forward to building on that in 2019 and bringing even more. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Public comments will be, we're now in our public comments section. Public comments will be limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. Consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. MC 201905, scheduled for public hearing and second reading on March 11, 2019, is advertised. Are there any questions from the council on this ordinance? I disagree with what we're doing. I'm so sorry. Any public, please, I need a little time to get up.
Is it time for public comment now?
Yes.
A new resolution, then ordinance?
Yes.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is David Marshall. I'm here as president of the Plainfield Municipal Management Union. I offer the following on behalf of our members to respond to ordinance MC 201907. We are deeply concerned that this ordinance completely removes the city council from the layoff process. Past experiences have shown that the input of city council on such matters has proven invaluable, and to lose this step in the process will significantly alter the checks and balances currently in place. With the city council in an oversight position of all layoff plans, managers and employees are afforded the opportunity to present relevant information that assists in making the process as fair and fiscally responsible as possible. Clearly, there are issues that the union is unaware of that prompted the submission of this ordinance. However, we collectively agree that as managers, we can work with the administration to identify alternatives to this action. It is our position that the city council has a responsibility and obligation to review and approve all layoff plans from the administration prior to submission to the state. It is part of the process to ensure that the city is conducting business as fiscally sound as possible. This is not a condemnation of the administration, but rather signifies the need and benefit of collaboration between the two parties. In closing, we respectfully request that this ordinance not get passed this evening, so it won't be introduced, and we welcome the opportunity to work with the administration to address any concerns with the layoff process currently in place. Thank you.
Good night, Nancy Havitt. I'm the TMBA. Vice president of Plainfield Municipal Employees Association, and also speaking with my members in reference to the ordinance is moving forward right now. We are very concerned about this ordinance, and I can speak especially from personal experience. It's nice when you have a small running machine, you have to do exactly what you want, when you want to get that in. But there are times when you've had, we've had a situation where mayors, you know, decided that they're going to target an individual, okay? And with this ordinance, if passed, what it allows for, it just basically reduces the chances of us needing to come to you, okay, as union members, and let you know how we feel, and as to exactly, you know, how we feel about getting an ordinance. We asked it, decided, again, we've seen mayors gone after individuals. I mean, I, no person, I example, I was put in deadly hazard to work by myself after the middle of the schools. Quite true, the level of fight for that is quite different. Right now, we're saying to you that we want to, to get serious consideration to other possible ways of dealing with the situation, rather than just giving all the power to the mayor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tia Monroe. This is my third time here. Today, I'm not scared. The last two times, I was afraid to come up here and speak my mind, but today, I speak for the people that cannot speak and will not speak. These are our jobs. This is how I feed my family, this is how I pay from a roof over my head, a car. People that don't have to worry about where their next check is coming from to pay their mortgage, are making the rules that affect the people that have to depend on these checks. So, I am asking again and again, and as many times as I have to come up here and ask, I want to keep my job. Thank you.
My name is Sheldon Green. I live at 1300 Grant Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I just want to share a little history. Our founding fathers created three branches of government, legislative, executive, and judicial. They wanted a separation because not one branch of government should have power over the other. As you have a congress, as we have a state senate and assembly, we have freeholders, we have council people, to be able to be the voice of the people. And that's where it all starts. One thing I want to share is, I spent 29 years as a union member. I was the president of the Plainfield Municipal Employees Association, as a member of FBA number seven, as a member of FBA 207, and as a member of FBA 500. I spent my life as a union worker. It has been Republicans, our governor Christie, who took away our pension dollars and said, "Cities and states, you don't have to pay into the pensions." When does pension employees pay enough? We have right now, we sit around here with the luxury of using our pension dollars to float the city budget. The next thing I wanted to share is that in Trump's America, where you take away the workers to fill jobs with those who are patronage, is unfair. Do you realize New Jersey is a labor state? And you are now going about labor busting, the same as president. And you are now going about labor busting, the same as, um, President Reagan did with the air traffic controllers. It smarts small and it gets bigger. You get support from unions, and you go to events with unions. We get this through, you want a union bust here in Plainfield? By taking away your right, which we gave you by evoting you into office, not to give that away. That's not your call. If you wanna do it, put on open referendum, let us vote on it in November. But as of right now, realize, we are not a microcosm of Trump's America here in Plainfield. We are Democrats, do not pull a Republican trick. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Smith, I am the president of the PMEA. Sorry to be here in tonight, um, after, have to come out last month for the layoffs of the nine-one-one operators. It would be more people here today, but we didn't find out until Saturday by reading the internet that the ordinance was up, um, on the agenda. So had I not seen the internet where people posting, um, coming out against it on the internet about the action that's taking place here tonight, um, we wouldn't have known. So we didn't have a lot of time to assemble today. Uh, the other unions are against it as well. The presidents couldn't be here, the PBA, they have a convention down in Atlantic City tonight, that's why they're not here today, but they will be here next week. We have firefighters here with us tonight, could you guys please stand so they can see this? Not one or two unions here tonight, that is a whole union stuck to it. So today, I had a brief conversation, which I had to have a hurried conversation with our attorneys. And what they said was that, in their reading of what was proposed here tonight, that under the city charter as it stands now, that the creation and the, I'm sorry, an abolishment of positions must be done by and in joint action with the city council. So this is not a power that the city council should be giving away to the mayor. Citizens voted you guys in for checks and balances. Why would you give away your power and authority to have those checks and balances like you promised those citizens that voted for you that you would be doing tonight? Uh, well, all year, citizens. But anyway, um, I just want you all to think about the severity of the decision that you're making. When you agree to move forward with this action, you're relinquishing your authority. It's okay to, um, have a good working relationship with the mayor, but it's not okay to just give him an open, blank check to do whatever he wants because he feels as though he's close enough to you guys and you trust him and you trust all the decisions. No, you're supposed to be here for checks and balances. So tonight, if you all vote to move this forward, what you're saying is that you're giving up your authority, you're giving up your rights. And if, if you're doing that, what does that say to the citizens that put you here in place? In October, we had a citywide staff meeting with the mayor and administration. And it was regarding the new charter changes that were put into place. Two important questions was asked. One was if the layoffs were being considered, and the answer, if layoffs were being considered, and the answer to that was no, at the time. These responses came from the mayor. The other question was if the mayor was trying to get rid of, get out of civil service. He stated that he had inquired, but that he was told that once you're in, you're in. So why are we constantly coming here, spending countless hours going over things and, and, and trying to find ways to circumvent what is in place for civil service? We have civil service. I'm asking you all again tonight to please vote this down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Franklin, uh, lifelong resident of Plainfield, I live on five-two-two, well, I own the property of five-two-two permanent avenue. And I, I am the president of Plainfield Fire Officers Association, and my membership likes to go on record as opposing this ordinance, we believe in checks and balances. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Terry Briggs-Jones, I'm a lifelong resident since nineteen sixty-eight. And I've just come to you today to please reconsider giving up your voice. Please think about the residents. Mayor, please think about the people. Just please think about it. My question to you all, I'm just gonna say two things. One, what happened to the Faulkner Act? You know, that's the mayor and the council and everything. I, I thought, or in my mind, I was thinking that we're supposed to be following the Faulkner Act. Look it up, for those of you all that don't know nothing about it. And then the last thing I just wanna say is, why are you giving up your power? Just remember this, no man is an island to themselves.
My name is Tia Monroe, twenty-nine, rural avenue. I'm a member of a national union, all right? And I will let them know what's going on in Plainfield, this gets passed. It's the old, one of the oldest unions in the city of Plainfield, dates back to eighteen ninety-two. I'm concerned about this ordinance also. If all of you recall, some of you weren't here, I stood at this mic when they gave up, when the city council gave up their power over the PMEA. I was the only voice that said, "You're doing the wrong thing." Right here, I have three members of city council that I could go to if I have an issue. These people will not have that if there's an issue. This is not a personality thing against the mayor, Mayor Map, I want you to understand. If there was any of these other mayors that proposed this, that are on the wall here, Mayor Keefe, Mayor Blacks, any of them, I would stand up and say the same thing. It's not about who the mayor is, it's about you giving up your power to the people. And that, I'm against this ordinance, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Bob Armstrong, I'm a, my name is actually the board of FBA book one number seven. We also wanna go on record, hey, we are against this ordinance, please not give your power. There are three uprise to the government for a reason, don't give it up, thank you very much.
Good evening, Kelly Newson again, uh, from Wachon. I spoke last week, last month, in regards to the nine-one-one operators being possibly dismissed, and I'm here again tonight, um, basically to say, in my speech on last month, I indicated that not to get too comfortable in those cushioned chairs because it may be us today and you guys tomorrow. And to hear that you guys, you know, maybe possibly giving up your right to one person, you know, I, I find it to be absolutely unnerving and absolutely ludicrous. And I just feel like, at the end of the day, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And people put you in position for a reason. For people who won't speak, they felt like you guys would speak. And you surrendering that to one person will forfeit the reason why they put you in position.
I believe that you need the power here, it's Timothy Breone, but I'm not stating on that point. I'm stating on this presentation that we had tonight, right?
I'm doing your address.
Fourteen oh five Martin Avenue. About, uh, spending more money on advertising for the city. When we see a presentation tonight that is recycled, we keep on spending money. We have so much money being spent on the wrong way. We have cars that are running around the city with municipal plates that are outside the city for city business. We have to cut back on our spending in the city. We spend way too much money across the board and not enough on the services in the city. They wanna cut people out of jobs to save money? We should cut it out by having, how many municipal vehicles do we have that no one knows who drives them? How much money are we spending on positions of people in the city that are not qualified but are patronage jobs? We need to start cutting this stuff out of our budgets and giving the people who work here, who are surviving on small dollars, a lot of chance here. Thank you.
Okay, not saying anyone else comes to the mic, we have a motion to close public comments?
So excited.
Oh, it's a paper? Yeah, MC twenty nineteen oh five, it's scheduled for public hearing and second reading on March eleventh, twenty nineteen, is advertised. Are there any questions from the council on this ordinance?
Not.
Okay. Are there any questions or resolutions, A through D? Do we have a consensus to add to the agenda?
Yes.
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 Are there any questions for resolution E? Do we have a consensus to add to the agenda?
Yes.
Will the corporation counsel please present?
Thank you, council president. Uh, corporation counsel's office presents two items, uh, for consideration by council. Uh, first item, uh, is the, uh, finalizing a workers' compensation settlement, which was previously discussed, uh, in the current session. Uh, second item is not the expenditure of funds, but the reassignment of funds. Uh, Mr. Ruderman has no longer with Ruderman, Horn, and Esmerato, but is for the new firm, Ruderman and Roth, who is asking that the previous appropriations, five thousand, be used for his new firm as the new firm, for workers' assistance. Thank you, council president.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the council? Is there a consensus to add to the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
Will the department of finance please present its items?
Thank you, council president. Uh, council, item H is a resolution authorizing a contract award to the Augury Group in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars, with the intent being that the Augury Group will be focusing on finding grant funds, you know, in support of the arts and the First Amendment church building, so that, uh, we are in a position to make that fully operational.
Are there any questions from the council?
Council president, I have a question.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, in the memo that was attached to the resolution, it says...
It's the resolution, are we talking about that?
Um, H? Is that the one with the second lowest bidder?
Yes, the next, the highest, the lowest bidder, lowest responsible bidder, will be I.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes. Councilor George?
Are we paying this, this contractor on an hourly basis or on a percentage of grants received?
There are, you know, with both A and I, there are monthly retainers. You know, associated with this, uh, it is unlawful for paying people based on the level of grants that they generate, that's illegal.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, council president. Mr. West, uh, sixty-four thousand.
Thank you, the next, that's your, which one you sent?
Can they come back again, at a, another time before is that?
For, for item I, which is a contract award to Millennium Strategies, you know, if they were to exceed the sixty-four thousand dollars, ten thousand of which is for, for compliance reasons, you know, they would have to come back, and we would have to come back to this body because they would be for new and different things that were well above and beyond what's scoped out here. Millennium Strategies is taking a general focus around the city. They are, they are responsible for finding, you know, grant awards, whether it's from foundations or anywhere else, you know, they're responsible for identifying and writing, you know, across the full spectrum of possibilities. You know, so their focus is, again, just finding grant funds period for the city. With the intent being to make sure that we've got enough outside funding coming in, whether it's around infrastructure, special programs, you know, they will be meeting with all the different departments, you know, just saying what our needs and goals and objectives are, and their ta- tasks have been helping us fill those, those pro- programs in plans.
Thank you.
Uh, we did, we still have a printout with the type of grants that you've got to before. Any other ques- questions? Okay. Do we have a consensus to add to the agenda?
Mr. West, please.
Yeah, we're good. I'm, I'm ahead of myself, my, my format changes all of the time at times, so.
Yes.
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 Department, please present its items.
Department of Works presenting a, uh, a recommendation to approve resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant award agreement between city Plainfield and state of New Jersey for the preparation of a preservation plan for five thousand four on Fifth Fifteenth South Avenue, Plainfield. Uh, the amount of grant would be twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It's a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent matching grant. So the cost to the city would be eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars as our cash match for a total of, uh, a cost of thirty-five thousand dollars for the project.
Okay. Okay, the resolution, okay, we're just looking at the twenty cents, um, five, if you were just reading, that was part. Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any questions for the council?
Council president, I have a question. Um, so I know there were talks previously, um, and they might have just been rumors about potentially purchasing a new firehouse. So do we wanna invest this money, is that even a possibility? Before we, uh, consider investing this money into preserving that firehouse?
Well, I think a, a new firehouse for that end of town is a probability, uh, if not an imperative. Um, but the firehouse is a desperate need of renovation, and it's a historic structure, so those renovations are complicated. And more importantly, uh, grants available for the renovation, but we can't apply for them unless we have a proper preservation plan in place. So this is the first step towards getting the grant money to renovate it, uh, which obviously, if we were to dispose of it, it would improve the value dramatically. Council president?
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
I just wanna add to, to the, this for clarification that, uh, even if down the road we are able to build a new firehouse in that side of the city, and we identify the money is at the site, this is a historic, uh, structure. So regardless of what happens to this fire, uh, station in the future, it's in our best interest to maintain that fire, uh, and preserve the structure as a historic, you know? It is in the registry, so it's in our best interest to continue to maintain it regardless of what the use of that firehouse will be in the future.
Any other, councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Um, do I have a consensus to move these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Of the articles?
Yes.
Department of Public Works, please present its items.
Yes, council president, I have five items to present that is due to you, are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, do we have a consensus to move these to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the Department of Economic Development, please present its items.
Good evening, council members, I have three items to present. They are B through X, uh, council president, are there any questions?
Thank you, councilman, but councilwoman, any questions? Councilor George, you have a question?
Sorry, no.
Okay. Do I have a consensus to move to the agenda?
Yes.
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 Will the Department of Health and Social Services, please present its items?
Good evening, council members, the Department of Health and Social Services, which, which is to present six items, letter Y through A D. Are there any questions, matter of residence?
Are there any questions from the council? Are there any questions from the council?
Could you explain what will be the funds for resolution Z?
Yes. So resolution Z is a grant that we're planning for to provide funding for rental and energy systems to those who meet the income criteria.
And who would be eligible for this?
Those who are in the range of 25% of the income level that is provided by health.
Yeah, I'm seeing language that says homeless, so how does this relate to homeless population or does it?
Sure does. So it provides, uh, it provides rental assistance, so for those who are homeless, they can help to, it'll help them get housing. So if any assistance, good rental, good deposits, that will help them and energy systems also.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a consensus to move this to the agenda?
Yes.
That's okay. Will the Department of Communications and Technology, please present its items.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Department of Communications and Technology presents resolution A. What consideration?
Are there any questions from the council?
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, Councilwoman Davis? So is this $75,000 that's being asked for separate from the $125,000 that we approved at the last meeting?
Uh, no, Councilwoman Davis, I find that the $125,000. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Do I have a consensus to move this to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Introduction of ordinances on first reading. Will the administration please present the ordinances submitted for consideration?
Yes, council members. The administration presented MC 2019-06, MC 2019-07, and MC 2019-08 for consideration.
Okay. I'm sure. We will go ordinance by ordinance to see if the council has questions. Are there any questions on first reading of ordinance MC 2019-06? Do I have a consensus to add to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any questions on 2019-07?
Councilwoman Davis?
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, does the administration anticipate layoffs in the immediate future?
As we stated at the last meeting, you know, as we're going through the budget, we are looking at every single division in the city to look for any way to improve effectiveness and look for economics.
Counselor?
Council President, if I may, I think for the benefit of both the council and the public, I'd like to speak on the rationale associated with this particular ordinance amendment. And specifically, the intent of this ordinance is to bring our code in compliance with our charter. That's at the, at its essence, what this code provision, this amendment to our code intends to do. Few things we heard tonight. People talked about the form of government. Someone said, well, what about the Faulkner Act? Well, interestingly, the city of Plainfield doesn't operate under the Faulkner Act. We under-operate under a special charter, which in many ways does mirror the Faulkner Act. And in a Faulkner Act form of government, just as in our charter, there are very distinct separation of powers. Many folks spoke about that tonight, about the separations of powers, about the legislative and executive branch. Our charter speaks very plainly about the separation of power. And what it says, and if you look at it, it says that the legislative function rests solely with this governing body. However, section 3.5 of our charter specifically says that the appointment power, the removal power, the supervision of supported officers, all falls under the authority of the mayor. So our charter is incredibly clear on those roles. However, we have a code provision which, in my opinion, strays from that clear mandate of our charter. And our code provision says that in a situation where you have a layoff, a removal, that somehow that should fall to the council. That doesn't gel with the bedrock of our form of government, which is our special charter. So what this ordinance intends to do is bring us back into compliance with our charter, which is very clear. By the removal power. Interestingly though, in a, someone mentioned the Faulkner Act, in a mayor-council form of government, there is no other mayor-council, sorry, there is no other mayor-council form of government where the council would have such a layoff power. That power in any other Faulkner Act mayor-council form of government, that power rests solely with the administration. So that is at the essence of what we're intending to do. We're just trying to come back into compliance with a, with our charter. Our code clearly has strayed from that with regard to this provision. And this is a cleanup of that, to bring us back into compliance. And we're happy to answer any questions you have about this, how it is, how, you know, questions about our code, questions about our charter and the effect of this amendment. We're happy to take those questions.
Uh, Councilor George, you have a question?
I do. Does the council have any other mechanism to control a layoff action that's triggered by an outsourcing action? So if the city, if the administration proposes to outsource a group of jobs, does that action by itself, is that governed by the city council?
Yes, in a couple of ways.
Yeah.
First of all, in order to outsource, we would require a contract, and a contract with that outsourcing entity. That contract would have to come back to the city council. All contracts must be approved by the city council. All contracts will always be approved by the city council. So there's one instance where. And if you were also, if you were outsourcing a position which was in our code, all of our director positions, our division head positions, all those positions which currently exist in our code, to remove any of those positions would still require council action because we, once again, would be amending our code and that can only be done by the council. Also, anyone who is subject to a layoff, I've heard people say, we need an opportunity to be heard. Well, there is, under civil service, which we are, which we are a civil service municipality and will continue to be as the law, you know, currently states. The, all those individuals who would be part of a layoff plan have appeal rights to the state civil service commission. So they are not without an opportunity to be heard. What we're just saying is that they would not be heard by our council, who, they would be heard by the state. Because our council does not have the appointment and removal functions that this ordinance seems to suggest that we've had on the books for some time.
So I want to go back to the contract for outsourcing. So that would be a second step after the administration determined to make layoffs?
Certainly. I was, if it was an essential function or any function that was to be provided by the city and the intention was to outsource, to outsource, you would have to have a contract. So that contract would have to come back to council. I think, does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm, really, I'm getting to my question is about the sequence of these two steps. So if, if the administration takes action for layoffs and then goes to the council to have a contract approved for the positions that are outsourced, what if the council doesn't approve those positions and yet we've taken a layoff action? Where does that leave us?
Well, obviously, I think there's a notice provision, obviously. In any layoff in a civil service, there are, there's a 45-day window where you have to notify any affected employee before it would take effect. My expectation would be in that circumstance, that 45-day window, likely that there'd be a council meeting. Administration would come forward with a contract for review. If that was unacceptable to the governing body, I think then the administration would have to, obviously, reevaluate. It wouldn't stop the layoff plan, but obviously it would cause an operational problem that would have to be addressed.
It wouldn't stop the layoff plan?
So let me add to the information that Mr. Mencello is sharing. Now clearly, and let me preface my remarks by saying, there is no layoff plan on the discussion this evening. Be discussed in ordinance. So if there were to be a layoff plan submitted by the administration to civil service, and mind you, I have read and seen some comments about, you know, not going to civil service. The administration could not, could not put a layoff plan together without submitting it to the Civil Service Commission for approval, either up or down. So it would have to be submitted. So let's assume there were to be a layoff plan in any department. The administration would submit that plan to the Civil Service Commission. Let's assume that it involves one employee and that was to be outsourced. As Mr. Mencello said, outsourcing would require a contract. And so we would have to come to you. Let's assume we came to you and you said no. The function still has to be done. So the fact that there was an approval layoff plan by the Civil Service Commission does not mean that you have to carry through with the plan. It is not binding upon the city. It is not binding upon the administration. And so if that function needed to be performed and the contract talks fell through as a result of the failure of the governing body to approve such a contract, then we will continue to make sure that that function is performed.
So in a sense, the layoff plan, under those circumstances, would be canceled and the employees would be right to keep their jobs?
The safety, health, and love dean of the city is always primary and we will never take any steps to endanger the public or to endanger employees.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate your question.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Mencello, you spoke of the Faulkner Act, and I know, obviously, we operate under a special charter. How many other municipalities in the state of New Jersey operate the same way that we do in which a layoff plan has to be submitted to the city council for approval?
Well, under a Faulkner Act, none, absolutely none. Under any Faulkner Act form of government, the administration would, could unilaterally present a layoff plan, assuming it's a civil service municipality, to the Civil Service Commission for approval. Okay? So in other forms of government, that situation is different, but under a Faulkner Act, which is the point that we mirror the most closely, the action would be taken solely by the administration in every instance.
Mr. Mencello, you used the word stray. How did we get here? How did that happen?
I honestly, I cannot, I do not have an understanding of why this ordinance was originally approved by a governing body that's been in place for quite some time. But a clear reading of our charter versus our code, this doesn't really gel. So we thought, we thought it was incumbent on us to put, to make sure that our ordinances comply with, that comply with our charter. Yeah, and if I, Council President, if I may, just to say one other instance. This is not the first time we've had an instance where our code hasn't complied with our charter. As some council members may recall, we had litigation between the mayor and a prior city council regarding PMUA appointments. Just for, just a refresher for those who weren't there, the PMUA, the code provision with regard to appointments to, I'm sorry, to Parsa, required that the mayor make that appointment, but that it must be the executive director of the PMUA. The mayor took legal action to say, that's an infringement upon my appointment power. I have the right under our charter to appoint someone subject to advice and consent of the council. You can't put restrictions on my appointment power. That went to court, the mayor versus the council, and ultimately, the mayor won that case on the idea that that was, that we're not able to restrict the mayor's appointment power. And ultimately, our code was found to be invalid with our charter. This is a similar instance. We're restricting the removal power from the mayor on the cliffside, and we're attempting to come into compliance.
How would you compare this to other municipalities, Mr. Mencello?
Well, as I said, I mean, under a Faulkner form of government, you don't, there is no analogous relationship between mayor and council. There's always been an administrative function for the council. I'm sorry, for the administrative function for layoffs to be handled and not a council function.
Any other questions?
Yes. So I can appreciate how we seem to be one of the only municipalities where the power of submitting a layoff plan rests in the council. And, you know, we're seeking to change that today. But, you know, the fact is, at this point, the council does have that power. And to vote on that would be, it could be considered a relinquishment of that power. Or it could be considered simply shifting the responsibility of this on the mayor or the administration, depending on how you look at it. But I think what most people seem to be concerned about is it being used as retaliation or there being some type of retribution if they don't align themselves politically. So what I would like to see in an ordinance is just something that enumerates protections for individuals. Perhaps, you know, maybe some type of threat test that says, you know, it needs to be non-biased or, you know, there's no political retribution, something that just gives people some comfort that, you know, that it's not done arbitrarily, because I think that's what people are worried about, just arbitrarily being fired. Is it possible that maybe there could be just some added language that provides protection against arbitrary layoffs?
What I, Council, to your, I'm sorry, to your question. The New Jersey State Civil Service law specifically provides the protections that you're calling for. Specifically, any employee who feels that they were the victim of political retaliation can bring that as the basis for the appeal to say that it was not done in good faith, not done for reasons of economy efficiency, and done for political retribution. So that is the standard that every employee in the city of Plainfield, by virtue of being civil service, has those protections in place as we speak. And by virtue of our code requiring that we are civil service, every employee is afforded those rights.
And I should add, Mr. Vice President, there's nothing to stop anybody from making that accusation today now that you, the council, has the authority to say yea or nay. So if you were to say nay, yea, under the present situation, there is nothing to prevent an employee from accusing you of political retaliation. So it works the same way regardless of which, you know, branch of government makes the decision. And the point that we have made and that Mr. Mencello made is that, in, you know, part of an explanation, you know, people are talking about you giving a power. It's really about the separation of powers. And the function that we're talking about under the charter is an administrative function. So it is not that the council is given of this power, it's the alignment of the separation of powers. And that's where the administration, or how we see it.
Any other questions?
I have another question.
Uh, who, who did I?
Go first.
Yeah. Go from one end to the other. Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so I have a few questions. The first one, you said that employees will have the right to appeal. That does that appeal process start before the layoff has actually happened, after the layoff has happened, or during that layoff process?
No. Once a layoff case effect, uh... Once a layoff takes effect, an employee may file with the State Civil Service Commission.
Okay, so this is after they've already...
Yeah, exactly. There has to be some action taken against them before, what you led to.
Lose, do you remove them from the position in order to effect your layoff?
Okay, so my next question is about the timing of the ordinance. So we just approved at last month's meeting, I believe, a number of changes to the code to be aligned with the special charter. Is the administration have come back in the future with more changes? But how are we finding these changes to the, that need to align with the special charter that we haven't found already?
Well, I think, I think this one's a little different. I think what we had the first time around was a, a, based on our new charter, we had a reorganization of all, of the, all of the departments. And that was the first large reorganization that's happened in thirty-plus years. In that process, though, many individuals came forward and raised concerns about positions that existed, and were concerned that this may, like, it would blow government. So we went back and took out all of those positions that the administration believed were no longer in use. Every department had went through their specific provisions in the code and took out positions that were no longer in use. This one is a little different, only in that this one raises questions of the separation of powers. And, you know, as we continue to come across code provisions that we feel are in line with the charter, we're sort of bringing to your attention. Do we have another one coming up? No, we do not have anything currently that we see as a violation. But this one specifically we thought would require the council's attention.
Okay, also, I think to Councilman Hockley's question, how do we assure the public that future administrations will not have layoffs just because when they come in?
Well, I, yeah, obviously, I'll say it again. The, being that we are a civil service municipality, many additional rights are afforded to our employees that are not afforded to employees in non-civil service municipalities. So, things such as tenure, things such as promotional rights, the calling of tests as opposed to just promotions being made without any criteria. Layoffs, layoffs, there are protections for all of these that are granted by the state. And those will remain in effect and will not be touched, because we are a civil service municipality. And there is no intention to see it to go in any other direction. Thank you.
Is there one other question?
Mr. Councilman Storch, who's next?
Yeah, just one more question. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna describe a hypothetical layoff. So, a layoff where there's, lack of work is not, is not an issue, because the layoff would result in an equal number of people doing the same work. And lack of funds might be an issue, where the city is doing it strictly to save money, but not actually reducing employees. So, how would that, would that actually be covered by this ordinance? If you want to listen to my question?
What? Here's what I'll say, Councilman Storch. Layoffs are done for economy and efficiency. And so, in any scenario that involves a layoff plan today, tomorrow, five years from now, the civil service will only approve a proposed layoff plan if the administration states its case very clearly, demonstrating that what is being proposed is being done for economy and efficiency.
But in this hypothetical situation, there's not a reduction in force. It's just a reduction in cost. So...
Economy and efficiency.
So it sounds to me like it's primarily a budgetary decision. So budgetary decisions are decisions of council. And, you know, in the balance of powers, the council's budgetary powers are probably its most important check. So, I don't have any problem with this ordinance. I just don't know that it applies to all the situations we might be contemplating. The way it's written?
Councilman Dan.
Mayor, you mentioned economically inefficient, efficient. Is there any other way, any things that could be cut to, if there was, a so-called layoff?
First of all, I'll come to a response to that. I don't want to go to a place where, you know...
I'm speaking hypothetically.
Well, I can't give you hypothetical about a layoff plan. What I'm saying to you this evening, what I'm saying to the governing body this evening, is that we're not discussing a layoff plan. We're discussing a change to the code that will align the municipal code with the city charter, and that will clearly delineate the separation of powers between the administrative and legislative branch of the council.
So the changes that were made in January of, I believe, the seventeen, was it the seventeen? Within the charter. Why wasn't this added then?
Why wasn't what added?
This?
This, this item is in...
To be in line with our charter.
Well, this is in the code.
Okay.
We're aligning the code with the charter.
So that...
And the charter is fine!
Okay, so you're aligned, couldn't have been done, but the changes were made.
Well, the first, the first I've said. Every time we've come to you with these code changes, it's been for a different reason. The code is obviously, it's a very large document, it's a lot of stuff. The first time was for the reorganization, and that was all oriented towards. And then the second time was to remove positions that we felt were no longer necessary. Now we're looking specifically at the separation of powers. So every time we've brought this back, we've looked at the code in a different way. We've had a different mission with regard to what we're looking to achieve.
And then you make the charter is clear on this.
All right, but if I, just a Councilman, quick question. You say, "Could it be for any other reason?" We have to submit the reasons to the state for any, that would never change, whether it comes from council or it comes from the mayor. The State Department, the State Civil Service Commission is gonna ask those questions. "What are the savings? Why are you doing this?" We have to make that case to the state, or else we can't move forward with anybody. So, and that question is, "Could it be for some other reason?" It really couldn't, because the state wouldn't, wouldn't pass muster, and the state wouldn't let us move forward.
No more questions? Thank you.
Um, Councilman, I have one question. So you said that you have to submit the plan to civil service, and you have to convince civil service. So, what's stopping the administrator from sending a very convincing plan to civil service that they agree with?
Because we can't do that without council approval. And that's, that's why, that's why we're here. Is that before we even submit that plan for consideration, under our current system, the council has to approve that submission of that layoff plan. The only difference that we have, the only difference that this one can do was will allow us to submit that plan for state of the day. And the council will overhave that function.
And the reason for that is that it's an administrative function. Now, hiring, the layoff termination, it's all under the charter of function of the administrative branch of council. Nope? Nope?
Okay.
So just so the public is aware, this roll call is just to add this to the March 11 regular meeting, which is to be voted on for first reading at that time. It would require a second reading the next one. So, this roll call is for consensus to move to the March 11 regular meeting agenda, MC2019-07. Councilmembers Anamadi?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Hockley?
Yes.
Council President Mizlin?
Yes.
This ordinance will appeal on March 11 Thursday.
Let's see, 2019-08. Under any questions for Councilmen? Uh, let's see, 2019-08. Members, let's move back to the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Citizens' participation, citizens are welcome to address the council on any governmental item of concern to them, whether or not it is scheduled on the agenda vote. During this portion of the agenda, a total of sixty minutes, has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be here, come to the podium and give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. Large groups, I urge you, select someone to represent them.
Anthony Howard, Vice President, PMEA. I just have one question to the administration. It was stated that we are not a Faulkner municipality. While we closely align, we have a lot of similarities with the Faulkner municipality, we are not. How many non-Faulkner municipalities has this within their charter? In terms of specifically where a layoff plan, I guess, would have to go to the council for the input?
Well, I think if you have a form of government where the appointing, the hiring and the firing authority is the council, that's a different form of government, and that really wouldn't apply to our circumstances. But in that form of government, where the council is the hiring, the appointing and removing authority, yeah, certainly a council action would be required to submit that layoff plan to the state, but we're not that form of government. We most clearly resemble the mayor-council form of government in the Faulkner Act. So, our form of government just wouldn't, wouldn't apply to us. And so, in that circumstance, yes, but we don't, we don't mirror that form of government.
And in a bold form of government, the council has administrative powers. In a bold form of government, the bar of, no, if you were, bar of Rosal, the governing body has administrative authority. Totally different form of government.
Nancy Puma, 1129, for Alani. A couple of things. First of all, you know I like history. Tomorrow, March 6th, March 162nd, well, March 6th, rather, Wednesday, March 167th anniversary of the Dred Scott decision. I want to make everybody aware in the city that one of the attorneys for Dred Scott was a relative of Nathaniel Drake, who's just great-great-grandson, Senator Daniel Drake. My, Charles Daniel Drake. My concern tonight comes as a resident, longtime resident of the West End. And when I was growing up, there was, my parents used to talk about redlining. And I hate to bring that topic up. They said that within the past year, I keep getting all these letters, cards, saying someone wants to buy my house. Now I'm starting to get these phone calls, which are all well and good, but nobody's gonna offer me a million dollars. But my question to the city is, are other area residents besides people in the 4th Ward getting these phone calls every single day? Every single day they're getting these phone calls or these cards? Because if so, we need to track who's being asked to sell their properties to make sure redlining is not happening again. Thank you very much.
Okay, I can simply respond that I get cards. I don't answer phone calls, and I don't know who the number is, so I do get the cards.
All right, well, we should have...
I just don't get my phone.
Good afternoon, Gregory, on Luke 515, 7th Street. Mayor, I like you. I like the things that are changing within the city. You got, if anybody don't know about work for code enforcement. We had the first meeting in January that a lot of people in here don't know about. They were asked a question. And like, you know, some changes were made. I think everybody just wants, like, the main thing, the checks and balances. There's a lot of good people that don't have jobs anymore. And a lot of people, what other people are asking is, in another situation, for less better words said, you guys can make something up to get rid of certain jobs. People like me, people like other people, we're here, we're building from Plainfield. I would never see myself doing code enforcement and stuff like that. I care for Plainfield, or whatever the case may be. I don't wanna talk out, talk out myself, but sir, you don't seem like you care for Plainfield. You, you seem like you know, I, I, I don't, don't look at anything like I'm saying disrespectful. You seem like you know everything, you have an answer for everything, but when it comes down to it, these people, they want to see action. They want to see action. And the things that are coming, I only worked for the city for a year. I love my city, I'm gonna say it again, I love my city. But with these, with people that been here longer than me, what they're seeing, they're not seeing good change, good changes coming with the change to the charter.
San Corano, 1284 East Front, Long Island. I'm against this passing, not because of the current administration, but because of past administrations and future administrations. We all know the problems that we've had in the recent five, 10, 15, 20 years with, at odds with city council. When you take that away, where is the balance? Council has a responsibility in their specific wards. However, they have a responsibility to the whole as well. When an administration presents anything, changes, alters, financial, any plans, it's the give and take, it's the discussions amongst the bodies that allow some things to pass, some things not to pass. If a future administration decides not to put nine people in the top nine positions for whatever reason, what can the body do about that? There was an example brought last by the attorney that city council, or there was a lawsuit. Well, that really isn't an equal example. You, once you pass this ordinance, you don't have that legal right to sue the administration. Whatever administration it is, you've passed the rule, the law, it's now in the books. I don't necessarily agree with that balance of power for future administrations. We like the movement, and in fact, I compliment the mayor more than I care to say publicly because of our movement over the last years. And he worked hard, he worked two decades to get where he is. And he formed relationships with council, with people who are running, helped them, advised them, educated them, mentored them. And that's how you all come together. But still, don't delete the powers that you have when sometimes administrations and this body doesn't agree. Thank you.
Jeff Dunn, 328, my cat. Thank you. Power can see its nothing without a man. Never has, never will, Victor Douglas. Absolute power corrupts. Absolutely. And, council, I want you to look at this situation, not in regard to today, but in regard to tomorrow, and the next, and the next, and the next, and the next, and the next. Put the personalities to the side. Councilman Corey Storch, you don't agree on much. But I have to give it to you. Your focus in regard to the fact, in reference to this particular situation, that the council is supposed to deal with budgetary situations to check and balance the administration. I agree with you. And that power needs to stay with the council. It is too much power to put in one side. Too much power! It is intoxicating. It is addictive and can be, will be abuse because we're dealing with human beings. I need for you to understand, you're setting the stage for a very serious shift in political momentum and power that needs not be with one person. And let's be clear, the administration is one person. A strong mayor can sway their whole side and basically run this city like nobody else, period. He has the power, or she has the power to do what they want. And there is nothing more powerful than the concept of jobs, getting them or losing them. There is nothing more powerful. And as soon as there's a shift in the political state in regard to, uh, uh, when the administration leaves, then all those people who were following that previous administration, oh, they're in trouble. That is power. Absolute power. Needs to be put in check and there needs to be balance. And it cannot be about current events, it cannot be about current politics. It has to be for the true benefit of this city. I say to the council, please, please do not give up your power. This power for nothing, period. I agree.
My name is Michael Bell, I'm the Vice President of the FOA, um, newly appointed, so. Um, I've been a fireman since I was nineteen, um, about fifteen years on the job. And, uh, three things I've came across, uh, with being here, I've seen layoffs happen at the fire department. Um, the gentlemen, they were affected, the families were affected. It wasn't, the reasons that were given were not because of wrong, their work, lack of work or negative, it was budgetary. So when he said it wasn't, couldn't, couldn't be budgetary, it can be. All right, and, um, if you have the power and you guys have the say in it, why change? It's not affecting anybody right now, why give it to one individual? Because, I mean, look where the state we're in now, the United States, one person. These actually turned everyone against each other. And when it's that, it was actually coming together and the city is like, we, we enjoy each other, we, we come together. The different municipalities, everybody, we know each other, we speak to each other. Things can get bad when you, you know, it's not, it's not healthy. It's not, it's not healthy to give all the power to one person. It's, it's beautiful to see different people with opinions. And that's what the United States is built on, opinions and your reasoning, and your reasoning, and your reasoning. When you give it to one, it's not, it's not, it's a recipe for felony. Thank you.
Johnny Pritchard, formerly of 723 Arlington, in Plainfield, New Jersey, now forty-two, that's forty-four, West Holly Street, Cranford, New Jersey. Several things I'd like to address the city council. One, keep the civil service as is because police officers and firefighters are all in the civil service here in Plainfield. We do not need to jeopardize their jobs because of any political changes. That's why we have civil service in the first place, to contin-, uh, to continuously have the service that we, we need. Our police officers and firefighters risk their lives every day, every day, day in and day out. Secondly, we need to back our military personnel who are serving our country, especially the sons and daughters of Plainfield who are wearing army green, navy blue, Air Force blue, Marine Corps green, Coast Guard blue. We failed to do that during the war in Vietnam. Sixteen men from Plainfield lost their lives during the war, sixteen men. Those who came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like to say that word Nazi retired once and for all. It's just as bad as other N-word, which of course I will not, will not use. And third, we need to reactivate Willemberg. We need to activate the hospital. We need that hospital, we need it badly and we need it ASAP. It's a national security issue. What if another violent attack occurs? We need those hospitals and others very, very badly. The sooner we activate Willemberg, the better off we all would be. Don't make this so clear.
Hi, my name is Tia Hung, I live at six zero five East Front Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm currently an I-11 operator here in Plainfield, I work at E-47. When councilmen had, we talked about the backlash, I have received that since I've been speaking in front of city council. I now understand what our ancestors mean when they said they had to fight for everything. Our generation knows nothing about fighting because we are privileged, we have been given everything that we wanted. Now we have to actually get up and fight, we have to deal with the backlash of speaking up and trying to support ourselves. And that's okay, but Mayor Matt, I voted for you. I trusted you, I put my faith in you, and I'm not taking it away yet because this is not done yet. But I'm asking you, we have four full-time dispatchers and we're putting seventy-five thousand dollars in running a commercial. Couldn't we use that for something like our jobs?
Elieka Jones, seven sixty-one East Third Street, Part B. I normally don't get up and speak and, um, kinda had to. I originally came from the Board of Education and we went through two layoffs. And what I loved about it is that we were able to do our Donaldson letter and write to the board and say to them, what our jobs were, what did we do, how did we get here? And just feeling gratified, knowing that someone else other than administration was hearing us, taking into consideration of what we were going through helped out a lot. Um, I was able to stay on the first time, second layoff came on. Um, and the second time they said that they weren't gonna rise us, they were just eliminating my position altogether. So there's nothing I can say, nothing I can do, no letter I can write. And it hurt, hurt me, because I am a Plainfield resident, I went to the high school. I got the job through a program from the high school. And I dedicated my blood, my sweat, my tears, going to college, raising my daughter. And the feeling that you can no longer come before you guys, come and have a voice, is a problem. I think that's what everyone is saying here. We're saying, if we cannot come to this mic and have a conversation with you, tell you about our jobs, not the numbers that administration is coming up with, but us as a person. When you take away that voice, you're taking away our human rights, our dignity. And it's just frustrating, I understand it's a charter change. I know that the mayor plans on doing some amazing and exciting things and I'm not taking it away from this administration. But I'm saying, if you take away our voice to come here, it's a problem to us, it's a problem to me. And I literally feel like I'm going all over this, all over again, and if I sound emotional, it's because I am. I'm emotional, I'm not up here for any layoffs and I know there's no current layoff plans, but I was just here a few weeks ago for the layoff plan for, um, dispatch. And it just sounds like now, what you guys just did last month, you're now coming before us and saying, we're gonna change the charter. We don't have to come here and speak to you and make you guys the bad guys. Administration will go ahead and do that work for you. And that's all I hear. So please, really think about it, maybe we need to change that part in the charter for layoffs. I think administration should have the right for hiring. But when we're talking about eliminating positions and eliminating jobs, I think that should be something that comes before the council because that is budgetary. You can't say you're getting rid of me because of lack of money or lack of work, but then hire consultants to come do my job for pennies. And let's say I can't come here and tell you about it and tell you what is wrong about that and tell you that we're residents, we should be happy, we should be a family, this should be a family. I know a lot of the people here and I just hope that we can come together as administration, as employees, as council and work on this issue together. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Good evening again, Cynthia Smith, fourteen thirty-one Columbus Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. There are so many things that were said here tonight, so many questions that was asked. Um, so many things that I heard that just does not add up. Um, it seems to me that this ordinance has been put in place in retaliation because you guys did not come forth with the response they wanted from the last meeting. So because you guys did not go and vote and lay off those dispatchers the way they wanted you to, so let's come back with another one, we'll take that off you guys. This way you don't have to hear the heartache and the pain in people's voices that are losing their jobs. This way you don't have to worry about, I'm up for election this year, she's up for election, who's ever up for election? Worry about backlash from the citizens and the residents. One thing I want to say today, and this is not a threat, what I want to say to you today is that the majority of the employees here that are not in the administrative level jobs are residents. They do have family members, they do get involved in community. So just to pass it over to him, that doesn't make you, um, not, you know, responsible for what you do here today. They still can go out and say, hey, they voted for that. So to do this, just so that you don't have to wear that on your back of not coming forward what he said or what the administration wants is wrong, that's one. For two, one of the things that was said was that, uh, the, the, um, Mr. Machello, he was making reference to the, the power for the fire and to create jobs. Those things they do have control over, but when you abolish positions, that's something totally different. We don't have our attorney here tonight because it was a late notice, but he will be here with us next Monday. We'll pay the money and spend the money to bring the attorney here to explain it to you because we'd rather donate that money like we always do into the community. Organizations come to us and they ask for funds. We'd rather be spending our dollars on the community. But if we have to pay to have an attorney come and stand before you guys and tell you that when it comes to layoffs, it's different from when you have to fire the person, that's totally different, okay? If someone has done something wrong, they, they go through the civil service process. You write the person up, it's a whole list of things that you did when you have to get rid of an employee through the civil service. To tell someone, you're being laid off, you have no way of anybody else doing checks and balances and then you can appeal, well, you've already lost your job. Appeals take a long time and two, it costs money. So if the taxpayer dollars, because the taxpayers will pay those fees, is longer than those individuals, that's what they count on. It's just like with court case, you have people that can't afford lawyers and that's why they have to go get public defenders, okay? Why should we go there when we already have it here? Don't look at other municipalities, this is Plainfield, it's been like this for years. I have been an employee for thirty-seven years. For thirty-seven years, this is the way layoffs was done and we've had plenty of layoffs during my time here, plenty. But you guys look at the budget last year, you approved it and the budget is coming back to you again. Look at the differences in the budget from last year to this year. Look at the promotions, look at the new positions. I'm not talking about ones that are backfilling, positions that are vacant because someone retired. I'm talking about new positions. Those are the things that you can control to make sure that the budget stays in line with exactly the amount of money that you need to keep taxes from raising on the citizens. To go to, let me have the ability to lay off whom I choose to because I say is better, that's wrong, it's totally wrong. So again, we'll be back Monday, we'll be back with more, police was here tonight, we'll be back with more people and we will also be back with our attorneys. Not trying to threaten you or anything, but I am really upset with you guys who we trust to oversee fairness when it comes to our jobs, to sit back and just give it up is wrong. And I will personally rock door to door with anyone that's running against anyone up here when the time comes, if this goes through. Thank you.
Welcome to the mic and I have a motion to close, uh, citizen's participation.
Move.
Second. Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Number one.
Seven.
All is in favor?